April fifteenth, uh, Orizonian Fields, getting order. Uh, roll call for.
Richard Greenham, please use your microphones. Microphones. Don Gilmore.
Here.
David Hossi.
Here.
Isaac Shabazz.
Here.
Kevin Myers.
Here. Okay, first order of business is the minutes from the February nineteenth meeting. Um, I'm gonna get, probably get a chance to review the minutes. Make a motion, pass them as is. We have a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? Roll call.
Richard Greenham.
Aye.
Don Gilmore.
Aye.
David Hossi.
Aye.
Isaac Shabazz.
Whoa.
Kevin Myers.
Aye. Okay. Uh, first order of business is the, uh, the document number two oh two dash oh two, um, a variance for healthy communities. So, anyone here available to speak on behalf of this?
I have the staff report for healthy communities. Um, essentially, this building has been used since nineteen ninety-five, um, in a business capacity. It is rated or zoned B residential, but the usage has followed what they're proposing, and, um, it's compatible with the area and follows previous usage. So, we recommend that this variance be approved. Um, one other thing to note is that our ordinances made it really difficult to tell if they even needed the use variance. So, we're bringing it before you just to make sure that we're crossing our Ts and batting our Is and doing it properly.
Do you, um, anybody have any questions? Now, yeah, now.
Because of the cancellation of the, of the first meeting, we went ahead and sent out the twelve registered letters to the, uh, folks who needed them, and we didn't receive any yeses or noes for the program. I thought that was necessary to put in there, and as with Annie, we, we agreed to, uh, accept this variance.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions, uh, either Annie or Don or anyone else here? Okay. Is there no questions? Are there any questions from anyone out here than the others? Anyone else have anything to say? Okay. Well, hearing that, we'll close the public hearing. And, uh, on the, uh, variance, so we had a, um, giving a notice?
Yes, it was mailed out to everyone within one hundred feet of the sub property and also, um, ran in the Frankfurt Times on April fourth, twenty twenty.
Okay, and, um, you know, we have no conflict of interest here or anything. And, uh, we definitely have a quorum. We have five here for the first time in a long time about how it's, I think it's almost here, so. Uh, okay, uh, any other questions or comments from the board? Okay, well, we'll, uh, uh, we'll, um, go to a, uh, will we get that? Yeah, yeah. So, while we entertain a motion. I'll make a motion, uh, to pass it as stated. We have a motion, do we have a second? One second. Second from Don. Um, any other discussion or question on this? Again, you had your findings in there, you gave for the variance.
This is, uh, this very job.
Yeah, okay. This is mandatory finding.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Okay. Other comments, all right, uh, roll call.
Richard Greenham.
Aye.
Don Gilmore.
Aye.
David Hossi.
Aye.
Isaac Shabazz.
Aye.
Kevin Myers.
Aye.
There you go.
Thank you very much, and stay safe.
Okay, you too. Next is a, uh, easy document number two oh, two oh dash oh three, a, uh, variance of developmental standards for Larry Pearlie, twelve oh four Hawthorne Avenue, to allow a manufactured home to be placed on a vacant parcel of land is not abut a street according to the city zoning code, chapter one five three dash two eight, of anyone present to speak on it. Yes, okay. Uh, Annie, do you have the photos that, do they have those or?
They all have copies of the photos.
Okay, good. You already have them, good. Uh, I did not have this until I got into the reporter's office today. This is, and I've highlighted, uh, the plat of the addition where the property is located. This is two platted lots, and he's not asking for anything to be done with these lots that they weren't originally platted for. This property is zoned residential, and it was platted in eighteen ninety-one. And when it was platted, the access that was created at the time was, were, was two alleys. Early, as you can see from the drawing, is that's how the access was. Probably, everyone imagined that someday, what is, I know is Walsh, I think it's Avenue, Walsh Street, Walsh Avenue, uh, would be extended. It never was extended. When the school built Suncrest, they extended that drive, but they extended it as a private drive, is my understanding. It's not a public street. And the city didn't require that that be put in as Walsh Avenue back when, when the city, when the school built, uh, Suncrest. Uh, Larry bought this property, what, eight, nineteen ninety-nine? And there was a, it was a house on the property at that time. He, uh, sold it on contract later. After it was sold on contract, there was a fire and the house burned down. Uh, and he got the property back. And it's now cleared, it's, it's, and actually, what I'll do now is show you, I think if you look at A one, A two, and A three, that is the property. And there's also A four, which looks at the property, shows the neighbor's, uh, mailbox. If you, going back to the, to the plat that I passed around, you'll see there's several lots there that all abut on the, on the driveway, or on, I said the driveway, the, on the alleys. Actually, Mr. Pearlie's property benefits from the fact that it, there's a east-west alley that runs straight into it, and then there's a, a north-south alley that runs up to it. There's another house that used to be owned by Phyllis Carberry, now Phyllis Lowery.
Yeah.
Uh, and that house was there when you, when you bought your house on.
Yeah.
Okay. And it's much newer. It's, it is a, uh, a manufactured home, and it, it's really quite attractive. And if you'll, pictures of it are on, are on the C series, C one, C two, and C three. C one shows the front looking from the school property. C two shows, I call it the front. I think, actually, maybe technically, it's considered the rear. On the alley side, you can see where it has the street number, it has a Walsh, uh, it's not a Walsh, but a Hawthorne street address. And, uh, there's a garage that then attaches with a breezeway to the, to the, the house. C three shows, uh, Mr. Pearlie driving up that, that alley towards his property, and you can see on the left-hand side here, you can see the, his neighbor's house. Uh, C four is that same alley looking the other direction, looking south. And, and on the right-hand side, you'll see the picture, the garage, uh, of his, of his neighbor. Uh, I think all that's relevant because it shows that this is being used in the way Mr. Pearlie wants to use it. generally speaking, this, the reason, uh, that this was deemed not to be allowed was by application of the subdivision control ordinance. The subdivision control ordinance, I believe, is a forward-looking ordinance. It regulates the creation of new ordinances. I don't believe it's proper to give it retroactive effect because basically what you're doing is you're changing the rules from what the rules were when the lots were platted. These lots were legally platted, albeit over a century ago, in eighteen ninety-one. And to now say you cannot use the property for the purpose for which it's zoned, it's zoned residential, to say it cannot be used as residential property because while it was allowable in eighteen ninety-one to have a house, or have, have lots that were serviced by alleys, it's not legal now. So, that's, I think, a problem. And quite frankly, if you go around the town of Frankfurt, you would find this is not unusual. Uh, my secretary said to me today, she said, "Well, Jay, my father-in-law's, their house is on an alley, and there's four houses that are off that alley on Green Street." It gives him a kind of. So, if you, it, it's not a situation that is unusual in, in our community, which shows in the past, this ordinance, the, the, has not been given retroactive effect. So, I, I think there's a real, and I think there's, as we'll talk later, you get into more problems when you start doing that. so we've looked at A one, we've looked at C one. B one shows the alley, several shots of this is, and it seems to be a wider alley. I don't know whether it's actually platted wider. On Beacon, it looks wider. On the plat, it doesn't seem to show that it's wider. But it is a straight east-west shot into, and it would go straight into the, allow the entrance straight into, into his, into his lot. And, uh, I think that's, it's, it's a short area, it's, 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 uh, it's clearly well-used.
Yeah.
And, uh, you know, I, I know that, that they raised issues for both fire and street, but obviously, right now, garbage trucks are going up and down there and, and, and making that, that turn. Uh, nothing he's doing would change that whatsoever. Uh, in regard to the fire issue, that's what exhibit E is. And Larry can tell you where these are. E one was.
Yeah, that was the, uh, corner of Hawthorne and Tiger.
Okay, showing that there's a fire hybrid there. And E two is the corner of.
Uh, that's just another picture of the same one.
Oh, okay. E three is the fire hybrid at the school.
At the school.
And that's important because, you know, one of the concerns is could you get there? Well, it's very easy to get where his house is going to be from the school property. That's wide open, there's a road, and there's a lane there, uh, and so that would not be, from a fire protection standpoint, it would be easy access. Uh, E four is the house to the south, right? Or, excuse me, to the north.
That driveway there is right next to my property, so it's just a catty corner from my property.
Okay. So, there's, and E five is, is that the same?
That's the same one, yes.
Same one, better picture. Okay. So, it shows that there's three fire hybrids in quote, in relatively close proximity, all within a half block of, of this property. So, so fire protection, I don't think is really an issue. Garbage trucks are getting up and down right now. Uh, he's not doing anything that would change any of that. The reason he wants to do this, and to, to put, uh, a manufactured home on the property, is he, his granddaughter, who's in Texas, would like to come back to Indiana, and he'd like to, uh, have this, uh, property for her to, uh, have a home. So, that's, that's, that's the reason, the, the motivation for this. you know, I, I think that there's a couple of legal concepts that come in here. We talked about whether it's appropriate to give retroactive effect to a, to a subdivision control ordinance that regulates the creation of new subdivisions, and I think that's not correct. Uh, second, I think that there's an estoppel argument here. Estoppels a concept where if, if you allow a condition to exist and people rely on it, you can't change it. And, and clearly, his neighbor's been there, there's been a previous home right there. Uh, the, the city has allowed this lot to exist this way for over a hundred years. Uh, and I think to change the rules at this time is not, is not right. And I think that the actions, that he had a reason to be able to rely on the fact that these were platted lots and that his use, which is according to the zoning code, I mean, it's, it's residential property, he wants to use it as residential property. You ought to be able to rely on that and, and move forward as long as he meets his setbacks, uh, which he can easily do. There's one other thing that, that eventually would come into this, and that is, the United States Supreme Court has said that if your zoning ordinances make it so that there is no economic use for the property, that constitutes a taking without compensation, and the, uh, city would be responsible for paying the damages caused by the taking. Now, I don't think that we should never get there here because the proper thing to do is either say he doesn't need a variance because we shouldn't give retroactive effect, or if you say Don's right, Jay's wrong, and we, we, we are going to give retroactive effect to, to the, to the subdivision control ordinance, then you need to grant the variance because clearly, this property cannot be used for a residential purpose without this variance. So, clearly, it meets the standards for the necessity, and it's hard to see how it would cause any damage to any other property owner because the only other property owner, well, the most adjacent property owner is using their property in exactly the same manner. And the house to the south, excuse me, to the north, is, uh, well, actually, that one sort of baffles me because it's built in the middle of the alley. Very nice house, but it's built right in the middle of the alley. Uh, so, I, I, and again, it, it's a residential use, and they're all residential uses. So, and that person doesn't use, he's got double depth of his lots. He owns lots on both sides of the alley, so he, his entrance is off, off Hawthorne. so, that's basically, uh, I think, our, our presentation. If there's any questions, we'd, we'd love, love to answer. I know that you're thinking, uh, it's gonna be, what, a forty by twenty-eight points, twenty-eight and a half foot by forty foot?
Right.
Uh, manufactured home is the plan. Uh, and, uh, Les has suggested that, that maybe a, a condition could be placed on the, for the variance was granted, and said that, that the owners, and it would run with the land, agreed that they would not petition for either a widening of the alley or the paving of the alley. And Larry is certainly willing to agree to that. He's not asking for that, it was never his intention to ask for that. So, we would clearly, uh, accept as a favorable ver, uh, condition, uh, an agreement that, a condition on the variance that said we would not, uh, the owners or their successors and interests could not request paving of the alley or request that the city to be required to upgrade the, from an alley to a, to a, uh, city street. Because the problem is, you just don't have enough, I mean, the, the problem here is, there's just not enough room right now to really make it a street. Maybe you could on, on the east-west, that's pretty wide there, but on the north-south, it's, there's, it's not nearly as wide.
Right.
But the good thing is, from his standpoint, almost all of his, I would think that the person, his, his granddaughter would, they would be coming, probably use that east-west. I wouldn't think there'd be any reason for him to want to go down a long way on the north-south alley.
Not really.
Okay. Uh, do you have any questions? Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, let me just, uh, address a couple of points here.
Okay.
In Don's report, I think he indicated that I had recommended that this be denied, or at least that's how I read it. That's not exactly the case. What I recommended to Don was that since these issues of fire and, uh, accessibility and conformity or non-conformity with the subdivision control ordinance were out there, the best thing to do would be for Don to deny the application for the building permit, which I think he did, so that a petition for variance could be filed with the Board of Zoning Appeals in a public hearing. Or that's how we usually take care of these gray area, uh, issues. And it's not actually a request for a variance of use. I look at it more as a request for variance from development standards.
I would agree with that.
uh, Mr. Moore mentioned this, the plating of the, uh, uh, addition out there back in eighteen ninety-one, the Woodside addition, that's correct. It is an old one, but we have many old, uh, plated subdivisions in Frankfurt, including the original plat and, uh, what are some of the other ones over there? Don, out to the east. There are all kinds of them that have, uh, been platted prior to the adoption of the subdivision control ordinance. I agree with Jay that the subdivision control ordinance is meant to look forward, but I disagree that it does not apply in some manner as the city has interpreted to existing subdivisions. If that were the case, then anyone in Woodside subdivision would do just about anything they wanted with respect to development standards and use. Um, but I, I think that issue does greatly contribute to a finding, possibly, if, if the board is inclined, that the undue hardship element for granting of a variance might be met. I think it, it lends itself to that argument. I don't think there were any objections, uh, filed to this or expressed. Um, the fact that the, I went out there and drove around that period today. Spent a little time out there, and it is a, an interesting and curious setting. Uh, I think the fact that, and you can see where they, the house that had burned out had been cleared, uh, and the ground leveled and everything, and there's a lot of room. But I think the fact that there had been a house there, uh, prior to this time is meaningful also in terms of granting of variance. Um, the house, as Jay indicated, just to the south, does appear to be a very nice manufactured home. I think it actually faces to the, the front of it faces to the school.
I, I think so too, but, but the, but the, but the address is on the backside of the house, right at the garage, so.
I did mention to Jay that it would be possible, if the board is so inclined, and you're authorized to do this, you can, you can grant variances, uh, for use and/or development standards and attach conditions to them. So, uh, the alley versus street issue is one that you might attach or consider attaching that condition to, uh, as well as the widening or paving, uh, of the, the alley to a street. And that's why Joe, uh, Jay mentioned those. So, if you're, if you desire to attach those as a condition to a favorable approval of the variance, you may certainly do so, and Jay and I could work out the language for doing that. They would be imagine that, that would be recorded of record and it would run with the land. And then I didn't know, Don, uh, you may have some comments, throw a con to this too.
I have, I have a few. We, we did receive a request for a, a permit to place a manufactured house on, we considered two lots off of Hawthorne Avenue, which is attached by an alley. Um, we also believe that at one time when the plots were put in, that the alley was, by Beacon standard, about twenty-six foot wide, which would be, uh, the right for a, a potential street. With the purchase of Suncrest Elementary, that meant that street wasn't going to be going through. And, um, and so I, I went and spoke with the street department and the mayor to see if we were planning on going ahead to place that street on, uh, an easement, and both the street department and the mayor said at this time they were not looking to install that street. We're looking at definitions in the ordinance book, and I think that there's a reason why we have an ordinance book. It, it sets the guidelines for how we want things to, uh, to go forward in. I do agree go forward in the city of Frankfurt. I can't do anything or say anything about the fact that we already have homes that are placed on alleys, and, uh, but, but we can't have a say-so in how we move forward here today. So, definition of an alley in our ordinance book is a permanent service way. It provides a secondary means of access to abutting lands, which basically means that it's for services, to put services in, to pick up trash. It's the ability to put a, uh, accessory to your property as in a garage and, and be able to make that, uh, that garage active by the access of.
that garage active by the access of an alley, a secondary means. A street is defined in our ordinance book, and this is all definitions taken from 153.01 of the City Ordinance Book. A street is a right of way dedicated for the use of public use which affords the principal means of access to abutting property. Street can be designated as a highway, thoroughfare, parkway, so on. If the person who wants to put this manufacturing home on the lot or parcel of ground wants to put the street that was, or that was set for to begin with, I'm all for that. Because now then, the lot is, and we're going to define what a lot is by the ordinance, the lot will be 50% of attached to a street, which is the dedicated public use, the principal means of accessing property. But I'm going to guess that, I'm guessing that that's not, that's going to be affordable to do those things. So once again, we're going to, we're going to talk a little bit about what a lot is, same definitions in, from the ordinance book. A lot's a parcel or tract or area of land accessible by means of a street for residential uses, abutting a street for at least 50% of the lot, as in the zoning code of the ordinance. Well, the property doesn't match any of the above. And as I mentioned, there's not a lot that we can do about the fact that there's already a manufactured home or a house on that alley. I'm a believer that we have an opportunity to correct a wrong and make it a right. And what can be done with, with the parcel of land that's separated by what was supposed at one time to be an alley, and that was never put in place? The easement that goes east and west as part of the alley now, once you make the turn and go south on that alley, the east and west section of it, it's the widest 26 feet approximately, has never been placed, it's still in grass. And, and so if you start looking at the potential things that could occur if the house gets placed there, and that is, even though the mail is being delivered to the house to the south of the property, you're looking at the chances of services not being, being, I wouldn't say capable, they are capable because they're being done now, but it hinders service by putting this house on, on the lot. You also have to add that the more the alley is used, it's a gravel alley, not an asphalt alley, the more repairs that would be required to make up that alley, filling potholes and so, as the alley gets used. If you want to go to one more extreme, the extreme is if you have visitors going to the alley or to the house, more likely, they're not going to park on Hawthorne Avenue. They're going to park in the alley, which will then cause traffic issues of anybody if it's the partial on the, on the south of this property, or people trying to access the alley could be difficult if there are cars parked in the alley. I think the biggest thing, the challenge you have is that even though these, these homes are going to be facing the access road of Suncrest, which I will deny, doesn't look nice. It does look nice, I was out there. It's the fact that they have a Hawthorne address, which makes it a little confusing for people coming to try to find the home. I do want, I'm not going to make, I was going to make two differences in my, my information that I sent out. Do you want, was with Lester? That was obviously not written properly. I do want to say that this is not a challenge for the fire department because of the fact that there is a hydrant about 376 feet away from the front of the property. That's the hydrant that's at Suncrest Elementary. So the opportunity for the fire department to assess the fire is accessible. At one time, I didn't look, I did do all my history and noticed that the fire hydrant was at the school. The closest one would have been at the corner of, the southeast corner of Hydrant and Hawthorne Avenue, which is further away than the fire hydrant at Suncrest, which would then make it a little challenging for the fire department to be in the alley and would require a pumper to put the fire out. All that information comes from our fire chief. But that's, that's not the case. I don't want to misinform the board in any manner in the, the chances of the fire department doing their job. They, they'll be able to do that if the house is placed there or not. So I just want to say, or finish by saying, we have a great opportunity to, to correct challenges that have been before us in the past, and by doing so, by not allowing the, the variance to go through.
Anybody have any questions? Don?
Don, one question. Is there a thing in the ordinance? I didn't even state that there were no house could be built unless it was facing a street.
Yeah, it goes to the, it goes to the definition of a lot, or even the fact that a house can't be built on a lot that isn't 50% accessible by a street. That's the definition of a lot. And in this case, the lot is drawn out. It doesn't, it doesn't attach itself to Hawthorne Avenue. It attaches itself to a serviceway, an alley. And one of the things I did want to mention is that the opportunity for the parcel that's sitting on the other side of an alley that's not been placed, that goes north and south, is the owner on Hawthorne Avenue. I mean, they would have the opportunity, or could have the opportunity to purchase that, that property to extend their, their length of their property. So it's not that, nothing can be done with that property. There's things that can be done. And if you're going, if you're going to grant the variance for that, then what's going to keep you from granting the variance for all the other lots that are down that property with an easement of an alley that's never been put in place? So I just think that accepting this sets a precedent and causes maybe even more challenges for the other plotted lots that are, that are in that subdivision, not attached to an alley or Hawthorne shoots out.
Any other questions?
Yes, and Don has done a very good job of outlining the issues that the city confronts itself with on this, including the definition decided. The one in 153.28 on lots states in A, "All lots shall abut, all lots shall abut a street." That's what makes this situation so difficult. I also ran into a provision in Thoroughfare Development Plan that lends even more gray area, I suppose. It's in Section 3 Residential Streets. The residential streets now in existence would not be subject to changes, except in a minor sense. New residential, new residential streets, however, should be designed in accordance with the sound principle of, principles of residential neighborhood design. New residential streets should have rights of way of 60 feet north to accommodate roadway sidewalks, pace street tolls, etc.
Okay.
Can I just say a couple things?
Yeah.
I think what Lester read just reaffirms that subdivision control ordinances are meant to have a forward-looking. And quite frankly, I've been doing this, been representing zoning boards for 22 years, and I've never seen a plot retroactively before. The other thing you need to understand is that a lot, why, you think of a subdivision, you think about residential. This applies to every use possible. Any use on that property would require it to be a lot. It's already a platted lot. So if you deny this variance, basically, you're saying there is no legal use that he can use that property. Because every use requires it to be on a street. So therefore, quite frankly, you're bringing the Supreme Court decision into effect. Is, is you have taken that property from him because he cannot, he has no legal use would be allowed there.
Any questions in the board? Any other comments? Jay, maybe afterwards, if you could, just give me that case number.
I got it with me.
Well, Jay is looking for that. I just want to remind the board what the statutory requirements are for a variance. And I'll just read that out of the Avian Code 36-7-4-988.5. "For the zoning appeals, they'll approve or deny variances from the development standards such as type, bulk, or area of the zoning ordinance. Or they enter reasonable conditions as part of the board's rule. Variants may be approved under this section only upon a interpretation and writing that, and this would have to be a part of any motion of approval. One, the approval will not be injurious to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. To the use and value of the area adjacent to the property included in the variance will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner. And three, the strict application of the terms of the zoning ordinance will result in practical difficulties in the use of the property."
Hey, I think we'll work on it.
Yes, we probably do this all night.
And I think our ordinance requires a finding of undue hardship.
No, the challenge here isn't, isn't the fact that, that we're not giving the ability for the lots to be used. If you're going to, if you're going to use that analysis, then what about the other three or four lots that go north of his, his two lots that are plotted, have no access whatsoever because the alley's never been, put in place? And their lots have been ceased to exist, I guess you could say, because of Suncrest Elementary School buying all that property and not allowing Wall Street to be put in place. So, you know, if we're going to use the analysis for his property, it should be a use for all of it. And, and so are we going to rent variances for lots that have absolutely no access to? That we should, because there was an easement of an alley to go in there, and you can't put the alley in now because at the end of that alley, they built a house. So the alley can't, can't go all the way through. So if we're concerned about, you know, what we do to his property, then what are we, what are we doing to the other properties that are plotted in this subdivision also? And I, I guess, you know, the debate can go back and forth all night long. I, I still think that because it's not attached to a, a street, that it doesn't meet the standards. And I hope that, that you don't allow.
I did have one clarification. You read the variance of standards on what we normally use. You stated the approval will not be injurious and the value of the area adjacent will not be affected. And that was, there's also the need for the variance arises from some condition peculiar to the, to the property involved. And then the strict application did not prevent a hardship. And then it did not approve when it does interfere substantially with the comprehensive plan. Now, these are all part of this.
That's correct.
Okay. I just wanted to clarify. Okay, any other comments or questions? Okay, we will close the public hearing. And just to clear one thing up, on the notice of the public hearing, it says, "Set petitioner Larry B. Pearlway, Frankfurt, Indiana, is requesting approval of a variance of developmental standards to City Zoning Code Chapter 153.28. All lots shall abut a street. Specifically, the petitioner asked to place a manufactured home in this vacant parcel of land that is not abut a street." That's, you know, so we are going with the variance of developmental standards. That's, that's what he's asking for. So, and the, I will read this checklist for the, for this. Is there was given notice?
Yes, April the 4th, 2020, and notices were sent out to each property owner that had interest in the variance.
And we have, okay, sorry. We have no conflict of interest. We have a quorum. And again, the variance of standards. We have to agree or disagree with this. The approval will not be injurious to the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the community. B, is the use and value of the area adjacent to the property included in the variance will not be affected in a substantially adverse manner. C, the need for the variance arises from some condition peculiar to the property involved. D, the strict application of the terms of the zoning ordinance will constitute an unnecessary hardship if applied to the property for which the variance is sought. And E is the approval does not interfere substantially with the comprehensive plan 2007 and the 2014 draft plan. So, here we go. So we will entertain a motion to approve or deny the variance. Make a motion to deny.
Can you repeat that?
Say it again.
Can you repeat that?
Yes, I'd make a motion to deny this variance.
We have a motion from, I think, to deny. Do we have a second?
I have a second.
We have a second. Any further discussion? We'll call.
Richard Greenow.
Yeah, this is to deny, correct?
Yes.
Hi.
Don Gilmore. Isaac Chavez.
Hi.
Kevin Myers.
Oh, we haven't any. It also, can you?
Yes, Isaac Chavez made a motion to deny the application. Richard Greenow seconded the motion. And we have three ayes to deny it and two nays to.
And so the variance is approved? Or, I mean, the, I'm sorry. Variance is denied, three to two. The board have any other questions or comments?
Lester, I believe we have 30 days to file our appeal to the Circuit Court.
Mm-hmm.